The officer is now in the session hall. All rise.
Good morning, everyone. For our invocation, may we have Pastor Dalida.
Atong doko atong ulo, magamputa. Nabinggamanan o dalaygo namunga Diyos, we welcome Lord your presence in our midst this morning. Kapasalamat kami Lord sa bagong adlaw ngayong monggi hatagkanamo. And we thank you Lord for this privilege oh God to come to you and ask for your wisdom to be upon us, especially Lord for this meeting, for this session. I pray Lord that you will envelop this place oh God, say mo ginoong agahom. And kapasalamat kami Lord especially for the life of our public servants. Thank you Lord for calling them oh God to serve the community in our municipality, Polomolok. And I pray Lord nga ikaw ang Diyos, padayon ginoo sa pagtabangkanila, especially Lord sa passion ginoo ngayong monggi hatagnan to kanila. Gampo ko Lord nga ikaw kanunay maghatag o kalipay kanila as they serve oh God sa inong mga katauhan. Ginoo nga unaman Lord mga butang nga maka hatagkanila ginoong discouragement. I pray nga ikaw magatabangkanila ginoong. Let it be that serving your people ginoong will be their joy oh God as they continue to live oh Lord sa ilahang kinabuhay. And today Lord as we continue Father I pray nga ikaw maghatag o wisdom, especially Lord sa among chair ikaw Lord magatabangkanian. Ang tanan nga mga agenda ginoong itackle karoon na buntag ginoong. Imukining pagatabangan o ikaw ang Diyos nga mahimaya, especially sa mga decisions oh God nga himoon. I pray Lord nga ang matag-usakan namo ginoong we will face this day oh God and you will also Lord ihatagkanamo ang Spirit Lord God nga mahimo kami an agent of peace that only here in our municipality but also Lord wherever we are. Ikaw ginoong mag enablekanamo Lord to display a life nga makahatag o paghimaya diha kanimo ginoong. Today Lord we would like to entrust everything into your hands. This is our prayer with much thanksgiving in the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much Pastor. The 10th regular session is now called to order. Please remain standing for our Pambansang Awit.
Mga kababayan, ang Pambansang Awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang magigil, kadasang si ganan, alam ng puso sa nitik po'y buhay. Upang dinira, uyag ngang mahiting, sa man duhupi, ikapasi sinil. Sanada taktu't opso si boyan, sanabi kong pagkao. Ay na taktu't lakawin sa pantayang nilamahan. Ang isang taktu't kawat, uy na dumay na nakihihi. Ang kituwin na paro niya kayda, panghaidi batibinik. Luwak ng halaw ng walang ipagsikra, uy ngangit sa bibit mo. Amin bigaya na partay ng amin, ang pamatay ng kahil sa'yo.
For the Panunumpas Sa Watawat ng Pilipinas, may we have Honorable Lumayag.
Panunumpas sa Katapatan Sa Watawat ng Pilipinas, ako ay Pilipino. Mukhang katapatan sa panunumpas sa Watawat ng Pilipinas at sa bansang kanyang sinasakis, na may tama, na pinakingilos ng kamayanang magadiyos, makatalikasan, katabo at makastas. Kamiyanap ng sao't pato, taglayang bilis ang dugo ng Pilipino. Gibati bang vivo, minagalihan lihan lang sa pataguyang namatibay na mamamayan. Wala pung totoong sililitan, at ang malalay na siya. Ang salway na loya di na nararay, tayo lang para biya't nagumpay. Sama-sama sa pataguyan na bayan, at iang putinang magandang nilamukas. Tayo ay mongkaisa sa hibiga sa dibo, para sa bayas sa'yo. Bayo pangtahanan ay di sa miyaya, ikas na mayaman, lubahin ay masagana. Yampu gayang bawat lumikan na ng umpar, sa hilapatin hawa kami tagapar. Muromulok tahanan ang kayamanan, na lumpak yamali, kutura tarangalan. Kawak kamay, pantibay, inating atong pulan, ibag bunit isisigas sa buong sangbayan. Muromulok tahanan ang manggagawa, muromulok tahanan ang mangmabayanin. Mas na'y katutuwa at mga kristyalo, tabipisig sa pagmula ang siyang ininiti. Ibag bunit bawat ang tao, tasuho, iwa kay ba, ang ginoong, ang ginoon. Bawat patang, itong buhan. Muromulok tahanan ang kayamanan, na lumpak yamali, kutura tarangalan. Kawak kamay, pantibay, inating atong pulan, ibag bunit isisigas sa buong sangbayan. Ibag bunit isisigas sa buong sangbayan.
For the recitation of the councilor's creed, may we have Honorable Orbisito.
My fellow public servants, let us raise our right hand and all together recite our Philippine councilor's creed. I am a Philippine councillor mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official acts. And as I tread the pathways of local legislations, may the Almighty guide my mind and heart that I shall be true to my constituents and to the Filipino people. So help me God.
I am a vice mayor and my publican to my people who stood above myself of public service. By divine providence and belonging of the people, I am mandated to preside over the local legislations that will integrate in and scale membership. I should lead a local decision to enact measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the Almighty God help me consecrate myself for the people I am proud to serve.
May take your seats. Secretariat, please call the roll.
For the seventh time, the 20th Sangguriyang Bayan is in perfect attendance.
Congratulations. And since we are in perfect attendance, we can proceed to the order of business.
For the reading and consideration of our previous minutes, we have the minutes of the seventh and eighth regular session held at the Espaish Session Hall on August 19 and August 26, 2025 respectively.
Any corrections to the minutes of the preceding sessions? If none the same is adopted as presented. Next.
For the privilege hour, other question hour, this morning we will be awarding resolutions of commendations to the teachers, learners, and education leaders of Polomolok for emerging as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress in Coronadal City, South Cotabato. And this is embodied in resolution number 226 authored by SB Member Dave Amor. Congratulating and commending the teachers and education leaders of Polomolok for emerging as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress held on August 8, 2025 at Paraizo, Paraizo Verde City of Coronadal, South Cotabato. Whereas the 11th Division Research Congress of the Dep Ed Schools Division of South Cotabato was successfully held on August 8, 2025 at Paraizo Verde City of Coronadal, South Cotabato. Whereas the said Congress served as a platform for showcasing innovative research initiatives and best practices of teachers across the division, highlighting significant contributions in curriculum, instruction, assessment, child protection, and governance. Whereas the teachers and educator, education leaders of Polomolok excelled in both the oral presentation and poster presentation categories, garnering the following awards: Oral Presentation Category Champion Theme 1A Curriculum and Instruction, Maria Amihan Coronado, Polomolok National High School. Champion Theme 2 Child Protection, Judy Espina de la Cruz, London National High School. Champion Theme 4 Governance and Crosscutting, Tino Paduma, Panduma, and Shilwin Kona, Population Polomolok National High School. Second runner-up Theme 1B Learner's Assessment, Erhadi Pril Bonador Tehero at PJ Plises, Siloy 8 National High School. Poster Presentation Category Champion Theme 1A Curriculum and Instruction, Maribel Inventado Ilyam and Diane Madria, Polomolok Population National High School. Champion Theme 2 Child Protection, Charity Antonio and Floribeth Zini Pomozeno, Yostakyo Barkatan Elementary School. First runner-up Theme 1B Learner's Assessment, Tino Panduma, Population Polomolok National High School. Second runner-up Theme 1B Learner's Assessment, Pearl Pilapil, Polomolok Central Elementary School. And lastly, second runner-up Theme 4 Governance and Crosscutting, Jeff Bian Batiansila, Population Polomolok National High School, Establason Australia, Palden, and Dr. Joseph Mailda London Malida, London National High School. Whereas those through these multiple victories across diverse dramatic areas, thematic areas, Team Polomolok was declared as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress, bringing pride and honor to the education community of Polomolok. Whereas those remarkable achievements were made possible through the perseverance of the teachers, the education leaders, alongside the continuous support of the schools division of Polomolok, the school heads, and the local government of Polomolok. Whereas premises considered upon motion of SB Member Dave Amor, duly seconded by all SB members present, the body resolved as it is served by the soul to congratulate and commend the teachers, learners, and education leaders of Polomolok for emerging as the overall champion in the 11th Division Research Congress held on August 8, 2025 at Paraizo Verde City of Coronadal, South Cotabato. Resolve further that copies of this resolution be furnished to the winners for the information, record, and posterity. Unanimously carried, adopted by the Sangguriyang Bayan on August 26, 2025, and certified correct of being adopted, signed Yostrolie, the Sangguriyang Bayan Secretary, and attested and certified to be duly adapted, signed Flores Esbansuelo Carlos, Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer.
Sige na, okay na. Kalindar man. Ambyo-ambyo na lang mo dito. Sige, isa-isa. Magjoin na kami. Magjoin na kami. Join tayo.
Let's proceed.
Okay na, proceed na.
For the first reading and referral of proposed measures or communications, number one, we have a communication from the office of municipal mayor dated September 4, 2025, addressed to the honorable members of the Sangguriyang Bayan through Honorable Flores Esbansuelo Carlos, Municipal Vice Mayor and the Presiding Officer. Dear ladies and gentlemen, greetings, reference, resolution number 80, series of 2025 dated September, April 15, 2025. As per above reference, a resolution had been previously adopted regarding the enrollment of the LG's bank account to the land bank of the Philippines We Access Banking Facility. However, the said bank insisted on the adherence to the format herein attached. In view of the foregoing, the undersigned respectfully request the August members of the 20th Sangguriyang Bayan for the passage of a resolution authorizing the municipal government of Polomolok to open an account in We Access Facility with Land Bank of the Philippines and designating authorized signatories to sign, execute, and deliver any and all documents in connection thereto. It is further requested that the resolution adopt and integrate the herein attached format. Thank you and warm regards sincerely, Signed, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, our Municipal Mayor.
This is only a request as to the We Access the online facility of the bank. Unless you have an objections, this be refer, uh, this is to be taken as one of our urgent matters later.
Next is dated September 8, 2025. This is respectfully in drawing for the urgent consideration the Philippine Integrated Management of Acute Malnutrition or PMAM resolution and earnestly requesting the Sangguriyang Bayan to deliberate and formulate a resolution supporting the implementation of the PMAM program. The said resolution is required by the DOH as one of vital tools for evaluating continuity and support of our local health initiatives, particularly addressing acute malnutrition.
Urgent.
And number two is a resolution authored by Councilor Baitus, Commanding Sofia M. Lumbos, Polomolok's first woman to pass the Supreme Court's Special Superior Bar examinations held on May 25 and 28, 2025 at the Teneo di Navau University for bringing honor and pride to the municipality of Polomolok, South Cotabato.
Urgent.
Number three is a copy of a complaint affidavit filed by the residents and stakeholders of Porok Pakakaisa, Barangay Maligo, Polomolok, South Cotabato through their council attorney Rosary Anne Esbering against Safi Poultry Corporation.
We'll go to the Committee on Rules, Honorable Salada.
I move that this be referred to the committee of the hall so that everybody can take part of this complaint.
Committee of the hall. Committee of the whole. Let's proceed.
For... The number four in the last is the calendar year twenty twenty five, General Fund Supplemental Budget Number Two of Barangay Countryside.
Committee on Finance.
For our committee reports this morning, we have six joint reports or reports calendared, and the first of which is a joint report from the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriations and Committee on Barangay Affairs, subject calendar year twenty twenty five, General Fund Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Countryside.
Committee on Finance.
Good evening, Madam Presiding. This is the fourth joint committee report from the Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation and Committee on Barangay Affairs. The subject of which is the calendar year two thousand twenty five Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Countryside, Palomolok, South Cotabato. Facts and findings. The above measure was referred to the hearing committee for review and proper action on August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. The joint committee held a meeting on September three, two thousand twenty five, nine thirty in the morning, at the SBCision Hall, SB Building, this municipality, for the consideration of the above mentioned measure and was attended by the joint committee members and barangay officials of barangay countryside this municipality. Upon deliberation, the joint committee found the following facts: That the barangay concerned has a supplemental budget amounting to two hundred eighteen thousand six hundred pesos, which was sourced from sources of one reversion of appropriation of two hundred eighteen thousand six hundred pesos. And the aforementioned budget was appropriated as follows: Object of expenditure, clean and green program in the amount of hundred fifteen thousand six hundred honorarium, then the road safety program, a hundred three thousand. As explained by the barangay officials, the budget was made in order to fund the projects that are relevant to the community. The supplemental annual investment program budget is amounted to one hundred five thousand pesos. The committee members also reminded the barangay official to prioritize the passage of their two thousand twenty six general fund annual budget before the years end. The joint committee found that the proposed supplemental budget is improper, hence the same was moved for its approval. Recommendation with the foregoing consideration, the committee hereby recommends the following: To adopt this joint committee report to pass a resolution approving approving the calendar year two thousand twenty five supplemental budget number one, amounting to two hundred eighteen thousand six hundred pesos, to take the said resolution as urgent into decision. Preferred by yours truly as Chairperson, Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation, concord by Honorable GCG Buntuyan, Chairperson, Committee on Barangay Affairs, uh, concord also by Honorable Calixto Bisalada, Vice Chairperson, Committee on Finance Budget and Appropriation, and also concord by Honorable Antonio B. Octavio, Vice Chairperson, Committee on Barangay Affairs. And also concord by Honorable Jerome Monti, Honorable Ligaya Orbisido, and Honorable Belibert C. Baitos, as well as Honorable Dave Amor. So I move for the adoption of the committee report, Madam Presiding.
Thank you.
And the next, uh, committee report is the uh, second committee report from Committee on Transportation, Communication, and Information. The subject of which is the barangay ordinance number nine, series of two thousand twenty five of barangay Silway Eight, entitled An Ordinance Regulating the Speed Limit of Motor Vehicle Entering Barangay Silway Eight and Requiring the Use of Prescribed Helmet for Motorcycle Drivers. Facts and Findings. The above measure was referred to the hearing committee for review and proper action on August five, two thousand twenty five. A committee meeting was scheduled on September three, two thousand twenty five, at nine AM in the morning at the SBCision Hall, SB Building, this municipality, for the consideration of the above mentioned measure and was attended by the committee members. The draft, the draft copy of the ordinance was formally submitted to the committee for thorough review, evaluation, and necessary recommendation prior to its finalization. The proposed ordinance seeks to regulate vehicle speed within the jurisdiction of barangay Silway Eight specifically to reduce accident in residential and school zones. The committee observed that that overspeeding and noncompliant with helmet requirement remain pressing concern in barangay Silway Eight, often resulting in road accident that endangered endangered the lives of resident, especially children and pedestrians. The committee emphasized that the ordinance complements national laws by localizing enforcement and empowering barangay officials in coordination with the LTO Palomolok Municipal Traffic Management Unit, MTMU, and PNP Palomolok to impose sanction and monitor compliance. Hence, the committee respectfully moved for the approval of this measure, having found it to be consistent with its intended purpose and in proper form. With the foregoing consideration, the committee hereby recommends the following: To adopt this committee report and to pass a resolution approving the barangay ordinance number nine of barangay Silway Eight, Palomolok, South Cotabato, entitled An Ordinance Regulating the Speed Limit of Motor Vehicle Entering barangay Silway Eight and Requiring the Use of Prescribed Helmet for Motorcycle Drivers, and to take this as urgent into decision. Uh, preferred by yours truly and concord by Honorable Belibert Baitos, Honorable Antonio Octavio, and Honorable Dave Amor. So I move again for the adoption of the committee report, Madam Presiding.
Thank you, unless there's a motion for interpolation, the two reports are adopted. Next.
The number three report is from the Committee on Health, Nutrition, and Sanitation, subject communication from the office of municipal mayor received September tenth, twenty twenty, September one, twenty twenty five, which requests this august body for urgent passage of a resolution authorizing a local chief executive to enter into MOWA with the schools located within the Soc Sergeant area to allow students to undergo clinical and nonclinical internship program at the Palomolok General Hospital. And this will be followed by the report of the Committee on Tourism, History, Culture, and Arts, which is the proposed ordinance declaring Palomolok Kenios as the official demonym for the people of Palomolok, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in its official cultural and public communications. And this will be followed again by the joint report from the Committee on Housing, Land Utilization, Zoning, Urban Planning, Public Works, and Utilities and Committees on Rules, Good Government, and Gov... Oversight, which is the communication from the Office of Municipal Planning and Development Coordinator, dated July thirty one, twenty twenty five, forwarding to this august body through the Committee on Housing, Land Utilization, Zoning, and Urban Planning, Public Works, and Utility Utilities, the application for development permit of home builders, housing cooperative containing an area of thirty eight thousand one hundred ninety-one square meters located at barangay Silway Eight, this municipality. And lastly, the joint report from the Committee on Agriculture and Food Security, Committee on Environmental Protection and Natural Resources, Ecological and Solid Waste Management, and Disaster Risk Reduction, Climate Change, and Committee on Rules, Good Government, and Oversight, subject communication from the office of municipal mayor dated August one, twenty twenty five, for a review and favorable, favorable approval of the request for the passage of the Sangunyang Bayan Resolution expressing objection to the establishment of a grower facility located at barangay Magseisai in support of the barangay ordinance endorsement and in line with the municipality's trust toward sustainable agricultural and industrial growth.
Committee on Health.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Good morning to my fellow councilors. Third committee report, September nine, twenty twenty five, from the Committee on Health, Nutrition, and Sanitation, subject as mentioned by the secretary. So I'll go now to the facts and findings. Number one, the twentieth Sangunyang Bayan in its ninth regular session referred the above measure to the Committee on Health, Nutrition, and Sanitation on September two, twenty twenty five for proper action. Number two, on September four, twenty twenty five, the committee convened a meeting with the attendance of the committee chairperson and the members, as well as the personnel from the Palomolok General Hospital, namely Ms. Groupie Marie Baroka, RMT MB, APCHA, Administrative Officer, five, Ms. Felisa Diniculasura, Human Resource Management Officer, two, and Chief Nurse Jenny Pitan, Jenny Tan, RN, and Mr. Christian Asido GD, representing the municipal legal office. Uh, the meeting's main agenda was the September one, twenty twenty five communication from the municipal mayor, Honorable Engineer Bernadette Palencia, seeking authority to enter into memorandum agreement with Soc Sergeant schools for internship programs at Palomolok General Hospital. The committee received and reviewed the draft memorandum agreement between Palomolok General Hospital and Brokenshire College Soc Sergeant Incorporated. The draft was initially prepared by Brokenshire College, reviewed by the PGH's administration, and subsequently examined by the municipal legal office with several minor revisions made, particularly specification of the responsibilities of PGH towards the interns, requirement for the assignment of a duly appointed clinical instructor, inclusion of health prerequisites such as COVID nineteen vaccination card and a medical certificate attesting to fitness, clarification of payment terms for affiliation fees, incorporation of provisions on data privacy and a non-disclosure, disclosure agreement in the clear stipulation that any damage to hospital equipment shall be charged to the students or schools concerned. Explicit statement that there shall be no employer-employee relationship between PGH's and the interns. Number five, regarding affiliation fees, the agreed rate is eighty pesos per student for every eight hours of duty or an equivalent of ten pesos per hour. For twelve hours duties, the corresponding fee would be one hundred twenty pesos. This amount is consistent with Commission Higher Education Guidelines and aligned with practices of others hospitals. The collected fees shall be deposited into a designated trust fund account of PGH's with a separate ledger maintained for easier tracking and monitoring of the funds. Number six, the internship programs shall cover not only nursing student but also those from midwifery, psychology, associate work, and other clinical and nonclinical courses. PGH has the capacity to accommodate sixteen to twenty students per rotation who will be assigned to the wards, operating room, delivery room, and nursing stations under the close supervision of their clinical instructor. Number seven, PGH shall designate a training room for discussions and lectures. However, the hospital is not required to provide overnight accommodations since interns' duty schedules will only run from seven AM to seven PM. Number eight, the municipal legal office confirmed that PGH or Palomolok General Hospital is legally authorized to collect affiliation fees provided the tender to resize, autorize, authorizing resolution is issued by the Sangunyang Bayan. While the office suggested the passage of a cuts-all resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to enter into MOWAs with other schools in the Soc Sergeant region, the committee found a case-by-case approach more appropriate. Number nine, the committee determined that a case-by-case approach ensures accountability, preserves the Sangunyang's legislative authority, and allows proper review of financial and institutional arrangements for its school. The committee further observed that separate resolutions promote transparency and mitigate risk arising from blanket authorizations. Accordingly, it recommended granting authority only for the MOWA with Brokenshire College Soc Sergeant, Inc. Number ten, the following documents were reviewed and serve as the basis for the committee's recommendation. Communication letter from the Honorable Mayor Bernadette Palencia, dated September one, twenty twenty five, draft memorandum agreement MOWA between Brokenshire College Soc Sergeant, Inc., and Palomolok General Hospital, PGS. Number eleven, recognizing the value of the proposed internship program in enhancing the training of students in various health and allied courses, and having reviewed the memorandum agreement between Brokenshire College Soc Sergeant, Inc. and Palomolok General Hospital, which is found to be substantially complete and appropriate, the committee finds it merited in the proposal and supports the approval of a resolution authorizing Monsieur Mayor, Honorable Bernadette Palencia, to formalize the partnership with Brokenshire College Soc Sergeant, Inc. Recommendations, number one, to adopt this committee report, number two, to pass a resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Bernadette Palencia to enter into and sign a memorandum agreement MOWA with Brokenshire College Soc Sergeant, Inc. for the acceptance of its students to undergo clinical and nonclinical internship programs at the Palomolok General Hospital. Number three, to consider this matter as one of the urgent measure on today's session. Reported by yours truly, concord by the Honorable Ligaya Arbisido, Honorable Jerome Wayanti, Honorable Antonio B. Octavio, Honorable Angelique Dave Costlas. So I do move, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you, unless there's an, there's a motion for interpolation, the same is approved. Next is the Committee on Tourism.
Once again, Mayng Buntag, Madam Presiding Officer, and the rest of the members of this honorable council. This representation as Chairman of the Committee on Tourism, History, Culture, and Arts is honored to present the third committee report for today's session. This report pertains to the review and deliberation on the resolution and proposed ordinance entitled An Ordinance Declaring Palomolok Kenios as the Official Demonym for the People of Palomolok, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in official, cultural, and public communications. Facts and findings. The above subject was referred to the Committee on Tourism, History, Culture, and Arts for its review and proper consultation with our stakeholders through a public hearing. On September three, twenty twenty five, the Committee on Tourism, History, Culture, and Arts, together with the representatives from the academe, business, church, pastoral sector, LGU, barangays, and Muslim affairs, convened to deliberate on the adoption of Palomolok Kenios as the official demonym of Palomolok. SB Member Dave Amor, as the proponent and, and chairperson of the Committee on Tourism, History, Culture, and Arts, emphasized that the proposed ordinance aims to provide the people of Palomolok with a strong, unifying, and inclusive identity that will properly recognize and acknowledge all residents. SB Member Amor further clarified that the word Palomolok Kenios is that meant, highlight only one group in our community, but inclusively represent all residents of Palomolok, regardless of culture, faith, or background, since it is the official name of the municipality itself. Mr. Mastura Alba, the representative of Muslim Council of Elders, being appeased by a concern for provisions of penalties of Palomolok Kenios, will be used in discriminatory way. Ma'am Merde Bautista, the principal of Silway Ocho National High School, as one of the academe representatives, stressed that keeping the town's name intact within the demonym essential for clarity, recognition, and a strong sense of place identity. Dr. E. Hardy Priel Tejero, as linguist, explained that while Palomolok Kenios reflects cultural authenticity and heritage preservation, Palomolok Kenios conforms still with national linguistic standards, uniformity, and recognition. However, this leaves a question as to which term the community should ultimately prefer and embrace at its collective identity. One of the representatives from the and guides. Thank you. One of the representatives from the invited barangays emphasized that once the official demonym is declared, no alternative or optional terms should be allowed in casual or official usage, as this would undermine the ordinance's purpose of establishing one identity. Most participants may have mentioned the inclusion of penalties against discriminatory or derogatory use of the said demonym. It was also suggested that these penalties be anchored on the official seal ordinance to ensure legal consistency. It was also highlighted that the term Polomolok Enios is already being used by the local government unit through its official Facebook page, specially or specifically the Bagong Polomolok News and Government Updates and the official Facebook page of Honorable Mayor Bernie Palencia and their community service posts. Punong barangay Roger Hermitano suggested that there must be a brief historical background in the ordinance, noting that not everyone knows the origin of Flomlok and its transformation into Polomolok. It was further pointed out that since Flomlok means hunting ground, identifying today's residents as Flomlokenios may not be longer or may no longer be relevant as people nowadays are no longer hunters. It was also suggested that ordinance should define both the history of Polomolok and Flomlok to give the public proper context while promoting under one identity. SB Member Jerome Ante, the indigenous people mandatory representative, observed that based on history, even before the Spanish colonization, the Bla-an people were already present in the area. He explained that the word Polomolok is derived from the Bla-an term Flomlok, which means hunting ground. This is the basis of the name Flomlok Festival. He emphasized that Polomolok originated from the word Flomlok and that this history forms an important part of town's identity. Barangay officials agreed, recommending that the definition of terms include the historical origins of Flomlok and how it evolved into Polomolok. A guest cited Cotabato as one example of this evolution, explaining how Cutawato became Cutangbato, then Cotabato, and eventually gave rise to the demonym Cotabatenios. The SK Vice President of Polomolok expressed agreement that residents should be recognized as Polomolok Enios, as supported the inclusion of historical background through the definition of terms to serve as context. Lastly, the vice-chairperson of the committee stressed that it is high time for Polomolok to formalize this ordinance so residents may be officially recognized as Polomolok Enios and take pride in their shared or in our shared identity. Recommendations: To adopt this committee report; number two, title the measure as Polomolok Identity Ordinance, omitting the year 2025, and changing Polomolok Enios to Polomolok. Incorporate a definition of terms that includes demonym, Polomolok Enios, and Flomlok, together with a brief historical background, explaining the origins of Flomlok and its evolution into Polomolok, to ensure clarity, inclusivity, and deeper understanding of the people's collective identity. Number four, establish that once the demonym is adopted, no alternative or optional terms shall be recognized to preserve the intent of having one unified identity. Number five, add penal provisions against discriminatory or derogatory use of the demonym, ensuring protection for the community. Number six, pattern the penalties after the official seal ordinance for uniformity and enforceability. Number seven, designate Section 6 of the ordinance as the implementation clause, assigning accountability to the proper offices for enforcement and institutionalize the use of Polomolok Enios in official communication, social media platforms, and community programs to strengthen legitimacy and proper or in public awareness. Lastly, to consider the passage of the proposed ordinance resolution ordinance declaring Polomolok Enios as the official demonym for the people of Polomolok, South Cotabato, and mandating its use in official, cultural, and public communications as an urgent measure in this morning's session. Reported by yours truly, concurred by Honorable John Edward Lumayak, the vice-chairperson himself, the members Honorable Jerome Ante, Honorable Angelique Dave Costas, and Honorable Joe R. Falcon. And so I move, Madam Chair.
Unless there's a motion for interpolation, the same is adopted. Next is from the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. Peace and blessings to everyone. Fifth Joint Committee Report, September 9, 2025, from Committee on Housing, Land Utilization, Zoning, Urban Planning Works and Utilities, Committee on Rules, Good Governance, and Oversight. Subject: Communication from the Office of Municipal Planning
Excuse me, you can forego the reading of the subject. Actually, for the next reporters, please forego with the readings of the committees because it's already been read by the secretary and the presiding. Thank you.
Noted, Madam Presiding. Facts and Findings: On August 5, 2025, during its fifth regular session, the 20th Sangguyang Bayan referred the above stated communication to the concerned committees for appropriate action. On August 29, 2025, a committee meeting was convened at the SB Session Hall to deliberate on the merits of the Preliminary Subdivision Development Plan or PSDP and the Development Permit or DP of Home Builders Housing Cooperative. The meeting was attended by the chairpersons, vice-chairpersons, and members of the committees. Also present were Engineer Dominador C. Kamiki Jr., OIC Municipal Planning and Development Officer, Ms. Charilin John B. Iscare, manager of the Home Builders Housing Cooperative. Pursuant to Section 10 of the amended rules and regulations implementing Batas Pambansa, the Home Builders Housing Cooperative applied to approval of its PSDP and DP covering an area of 38,191 square meters located at Purukma Unlad, Barangay Silway Ocho, Polomolok, South Cotabato. The submitted PSDP and DP of Home Builders Housing Cooperative were found to be compliant with the prescribed requirements and were reviewed and endorsed by Engineer Dominador C. Kamiki Jr., OIC Municipal Planning and Development Officer. During the deliberations, the committees concurred that the Preliminary Subdivision Development Plan must first be approved prior to the approval of the development permit. In addition, the committee is resolved to conduct an actual site inspection of the proposed subdivision immediately after the approval of the PSDP and before the deliberation and subsequent approval of the DP or development permit. In view of the foregoing, the four joint committees find the application to the meritorious and therefore worthy of favorable consideration. Recommendations: That this committee report be adopted to pass a resolution approving the applications for the Preliminary Subdivision Development Plan or PSDP of the Home Builders Housing Cooperative over a parcel of land containing an area of exactly 38,191 square meters located at Purukma Unlad, Barangay Silway Ocho, Polomolok, South Cotabato. To consider this matter as one of the as one of the urgent measures on today's session. Yours, reported by yours truly, Honorable Bilbert C. Bytos Jr., concurred also by Honorable Callex T. Salada, MD, Honorable Eliezar G. Hovero, signed also by Honorable Jerome Wyante, Honorable Joe R. H. Falcon, Honorable Legaya R. Orbisido. Madam Presiding, Officer, I move for the adoption of the committee report as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. If others... Yes, Honorable Salada?
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Although I signed with reservation as vice-chair, I find it that the committee report lacks substance. Madam Presiding, I move for a three-minute recess.
Three-minute recess. Honor, resume. Are there any questions for the report? It has been moved that this is to be referred back to the committee in a second. It was seconded, so the same is to be referred back to the committee.
Noted on that, Madam Presiding. Thank you.
Next is the Committee on Agriculture.
Again, thank you, Madam Presiding. Peace and blessings to everyone. First Joint Committee Report, September 9, 2025, from Committee on Agriculture and Food Security. Facts and Findings: On August 19, 2025, the 20th Sangguyang Bayan in its seventh regular session referred this measure to the hearing committees for proper action. On August 29, 2025, the committee convened a meeting at the Sangguyang Bayan Session Hall to deliberate on the of the proposed measure. Present during the meeting were the committee chairpersons, vice-chairpersons, and members. Also in attendance were Architect Ray Jaime, Administrative Officer five of the Office of the Municipal Mayor, Polomolok, South Cotabato, Engineer Augustine P. Palencia Jr., Department Head of the Municipal Environment and Natural Resources Office, or MENDRO, members of the Barangay Council of Magseisai, namely Honorable Mary Jane D'Seo, Honorable Paterno Olivar, Honorable Maureen Kagaanan, and Honorable Andrew Hayuma, Engineer Dominador C. Kamiki Jr., OIC Municipal Planning and Development Officer, and Ms. Roberto C. Catapang Municipal Agriculturist. The committee is found that the Barangay Magseisai, Polomolok, South Cotabato, on its 15th regular session dated August 6, 2025, have approved Resolution Number 55 interposing no objection to the establishment of a hog grower facility within the area covered by transfer certificate of title number T-14869 and Resolution Number 56 also interposing no objection to the establishment of a hog grower facility within the area covered by transfer certificate of title number T-14868. The hog grower facility is one of the priority projects of the municipality and budgeted already by the Municipal Budget Office. The proposed facility is expected to contribute positively to local economic growth by creating employment opportunities for the majority in the community and enhancing livelihood development. The Barangay Council of Magseisai has conducted the due consultation, environmental, and social impact considerations and affirmed compliance of the proposed project with applicable national and local laws, ordinances, and regulations. That aside from existing road, local government of Polomolok also assured another best alternative route in upper Matinau, Barangay Silway Ocho, for the operation of the hog grower facility. By virtue of this Resolution Number 55 and 56 issued by Barangay Council, the Sangguyang Bayan deems it appropriate and necessary to support such local initiatives that promote industrial and agricultural development in light of the municipality's comprehensive land use and development plans. The committee further notes that the Barangay Magseisai Resolution Number 55 and Number 56 have been found proper and in order, and that the authority to and that the authority to interposing no objection is within the power of the Sangguyang Bayan. This committee therefore move for the grant of this said request. Recommendations: To adopt this committee report to pass the following resolutions: Resolution Interposing No Objection to the Establishment of a Hog Grower Facility within the area covered by TCT Number 14869 located at Barangay Magseisai, Polomolok, South Cotabato, and a Resolution Interposing No Objection to the Establishment of a Hog Grower Facility within the area covered by Transfer Certificate of Title Number 14868 located at Barangay Magseisai, Polomolok, South Cotabato. To consider this matter as one of the urgent measures on today's mission. Reported by yours truly, Honorable Bilbert C. Bytos Jr., concurred also by Honorable Callex T. Salada, MD, Honorable Eliezar G. Hovero, signed also by Honorable Legaya R. Orbisido, Honorable John Edward L. Lumayak, Honorable Joe R. H. Falcon, and Honorable Jerome Wyante. Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the adoption of this committee report as presented. Thank you.
Unless there's a motion for interpolation, Honorable Salada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. I would like to ask the the proponent to add in fact, facts, findings in number four, the source of funds, to state the source of funds, and also state the documents were reviewed as basis for your committee recommendations. Example is the attendance of public hearing is very important, and it should be attached in this committee report.
If the honorable gentleman finds it that this is to be referred back, then you just can move to be referred this back to the committee.
I just recommend that they should include in their committee report.
So can we have a five-minute recess? So, can we have a five-minute recess? Honorable Hobero.
Thank you, Madam Presiding. Actually, this subject matter was already approved by the Sangunyang Bayan before, now that we will be enrolling to the W access under Land Bank. And I think Land Bank is now requiring a new format that what they submitted to us. So, we will just follow this new format with our resolution. So, I move to pass a resolution authorizing the municipal government of Pulumulok to open an account in W access facility with Land Bank of the Philippines and designating authorized signatories to sign, execute, and deliver any and all documents in connection thereto.
It has been moved and seconded, unless there is an objection, the same is carried.
The next urgent is the resolution authored by Counselor Baitos, Comending Sofia M. Lumbos. LPT is Pulumulok's first woman to pass the Supreme Court's Special Sharia Bar Examinations, held on May 25, 28.
Excuse me, there is a 1-point B urgent about the PMAM, yes.
Okay, we still have a 1-point B which was left, which is the request of our municipal mayor, the endorsement for an urgent consideration, the Philippine Integrated Management of Acute Malnutrition, or PMAM, and the request for to deliberate and formulate a resolution supporting the program or implementation of the PMAM program. This resolution is required by the DOH as one of the vital tools for evaluation, continuity, and support of our local health initiatives, particularly in addressing acute malnutrition.
What's the pleasure of Honorable Salada?
Thank you, Madam Presiding. I would like to have that this matter be referred to the Committee on Health.
It has been moved that the same to be referred to the Committee on Health, unless there is an objection, the same is carried. Next.
Again, as was mentioned already, is another urgent is the resolution of Counselor Baitos, Comending Sofia M. Lumbos for passing or the first woman, Pulumulok's first woman to pass the Supreme Court's Special Sharia Bar Examinations held on May 25 and 28 at the Tinayoy di Davao University, and for bringing honor and pride to the municipality of Pulumulok South Cotabato.
Honorable Baitos.
Thank you again, Madam Presiding. I move to pass a resolution commending Sofia M. Lumbos, licensed professional teacher and Sharia counselor-at-law, Pulumulok's first woman to pass the Supreme Court's Special Sharia's Bar Examinations held on May 25 and 28, 2025, at the Tinayoy di Davao University, and for bringing honor and pride to the municipality of Pulumulok South Cotabato, authored by yours truly, Honorable Bilbert C. Baitos Jr., and co-authored all members of the 20th Sangunyang Bayan. So, I respectfully move, Madam Presiding.
It has been moved and seconded, then objection, hearing none, the same is carried. With form and style by the Secretariat.
Okay, noted, Madam Presiding. And Number 4, urgent is the joint report from the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, and Committee on Barangay Affairs, subject calendar year 2025 general fund, supplemental budget number 1 of Barangay County Site. And this will be followed by the Committee on Transportation, Communication and Information, subject Barangay Ordinance Number 9 Series of 2025 of Barangay Silway 8 entitled and ordinance, regulating the speed limit of motor vehicles entering Barangay Silway 8 and requiring the use of prescribed helmet for motorcycles driver. And Number 6 is the report of the Committee on Health, Nutrition, and Sanitation as regards the request of our municipal mayor for the urgent passage of a resolution authorizing our local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the schools located within Soc. Surgeon area to allow students to undergo clinical and non-clinical internship program at the Pulumulok General Hospital. And lastly.
One at a time, please. Shall we stop from there and give Honorable Hobero the floor now?
Okay, thank you again, Madam Presiding. So, I move now out to pass a resolution declaring official calendar year 2025 supplemental budget of barangay canary site Pulumulok South Cotabato amounting to 218,600 pesos as embodied in its appropriation ordinance number 1 dated March 21, 2025.
It has been moved and seconded, the same, there is an objection, hearing none, the same is carried. Next.
So, next, I move now to pass a resolution approving the barangay ordinance number 9 of barangay Silway 8 Pulumulok South Cotabato entitled an ordinance regulating the speed limit of motor vehicle entering barangay Silway 8 and requiring the use of prescribed helmet for motorcycle drivers.
It has been moved and seconded, unless there is an objection, hearing none, the same is carried. Committee on Health.
I move now to pass a resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Bernie D. Palencia to enter into and sign a memorandum of agreement with Broken Shark College Soc. Surgeon Incorporated for the acceptance of its students to undergo clinical and non-clinical internship programs at the Pulumulok General Hospital.
It has been moved, any second, an objection, hearing none, the same is carried. Next.
The last urgent is the resolution ordinance authored by Counselor Amor, declaring Pulumulok can use as the official demonim for the people of Pulumulok South Cotabato and mandate it is used in official, cultural, and public communications.
Honorable Dave.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I put tag ulit sa tanan? I am now presenting the revised resolution and ordinance of the said measure.
Open for deliberation first, you move it for deliberation.
I am now opening it for, I am presenting this for deliberation.
So, the floor now is open for deliberation as to the proposed ordinance. Honorable Salada is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding, Officer. Based on the committee report, there was, and mentioned by the author, that there is a revised version of the ordinance. There is inclusion of penal provision, and with that, we need to decide further, Madam Presiding, Officer. And there are provisions that are, what are the derogatory provision, which is not clearly defined in the ordinance or resolution. So, I move that this matter be calendered in the next deliberation as unfinished business, Madam Presiding. So, I move, Madam Presiding.
It has been moved that the same be referred back or rather be under the unfinished business next regular session. It has, Honorable Orbisido.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Madam Presiding. Although it is being calendered now for deliberation, as I go over, I have also some points here that for the proponent to prepare, okay. Una is because you have mentioned already in the first time the measure was at hand, wala siyang penal provision. So, ngayon mayroon na. And then, I am supposed to be asking whether na include ba siya sa public hearing 'yung penal provision mo? And also, 'yung mga penal provision, and may mga additional amendments po. May mga additional amendments. Isa yun sa mga concern that I think, may isa pa dito para maano tandaan na. 'Yung the this, 'yung derogatory, kasi sabi ipattern lang doon sa seal. There might be provisions there that are not applicable to the demonim. So, kindly look into it. Thank you.
Noted, Madam Presiding, Officer.
So, you're seconding Honorable Salada's motion. Okay, so, it has been moved and seconded that the same be referred to the unfinished business instead next regular session. Next.
For the business of the day, for the scheduled second reading, we have.
The Committee, Committee on Agriculture as to the hog grower facility.
Yes, the last report urgent is the report of the Committee on Agriculture, Food Security, Committee on Envoy, and Committee on Rules with Government and Oversight regarding the review and approval of the request for the expressing no objection to the establishment of a hog grower facility located at Barangay Magseisay in support of the barangay's endorsement and in alignment with the municipality's trust towards sustainable agricultural and industrial growth.
Honorable Baitos.
Thank you again, Madam Presiding. I move now to pass a resolution interposing no objection to the establishment of a hog grower facility within the area covered by transfer certificate of title Number T-14869, located at Barangay Magseisay, Pulumulok South Cotabato.
Unless you have taken notes of the suggestions of Honorable Salada earlier and the same be submitted before the Secretariat, then the same in principle is approved.
Yes, that is noted, Madam Presiding.
Yes, it has been moved and seconded, unless there is an objection, hearing none, the same is approved. Yes, Mr. Secretariat.
Um, where will we, in what part will we insert?
Budget.
The budget source or source? Number 4. But anyway, we will wait for the revision of this draft, Madam Presiding, from the committee before we'll finalize it.
Yes, so, Honorable Orbisido.
Suggestion if this would be amenable to the proponent, that we can have the title resolution expressing no objection to the establishment of a hog grower facility located in Barangay Magseisay, Pulumulok South Cotabato. Siguro hanggang doon na, wala na 'yung, kung it would be okay. We will stop it there sa Barangay Magseisay, Pulumulok, South Cotabato. Wala na 'yung in support of blah blah blah.
Okay, so, Honorable Baitos, are you amenable to the suggestion of Honorable Orbisido?
Yes, noted on that, Honorable Orbisido.
Okay, so, let's proceed.
And Madam Presiding, we'll wait for the revised draft before we'll finalize this resolution. We'll wait the draft, revised draft from the committee. For the, again, for the scheduled second reading, we have none. Third and final reading, none, unassigned business, none. Let's go now to the announcement.
Who will be needing a van today? The van is available, I'll just go ahead because I have a BMLP Lanchon meeting. So, I will see you there at the farm. It's 2 o'clock, the program will start at 2:00 p.m. So, just inform the driver if in case she will be needing transportation. And tonight, please don't forget your bilao with fruits, no? I think there is no strict as to the costume or attire, basta anything ethnic lang man daw. Oo. Yes. We will wait for the, I don't know if the LC or the mayor's office will still give us more t-shirts for tomorrow. Unless there is a t-shirt, then we will just discuss among ourselves later in the GC. Okay, so, any more announcements? None, the session.
None. The session is adjourned at 10:24. Let's rise for the closing prayer by Honorable Salada. Thank you.